Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our inspirational word for the day, do everything possible on your part to live in peace with everybody. And Commissioner Kokowski has the dog this morning.
We have a special little treat for you today. We have a little female, I'm not sure if boxer mix maybe, about six months old. We were playing before the meeting and she is a sweet, sweet dog with a lot of energy, makes somebody a fantastic part of a family. So come and pick her up. She's going to be available tomorrow, which is Thursday, I think the 11th. And come down to the kennel, pick her up. We have thirty-three dogs total?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one dogs total. So there's plenty to pick from, so we really need your help. Come down and pick one out, take them home. Remember to adopt, don't shop. Thanks. Come on.
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Reparations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
No advances, no payments, requisitions.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Administrator Cortez.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. I do not have any new, potential new hires, just wanted to talk with the Board about. However, I would like to discuss ongoing, a matter of ongoing litigation and also potential sale of real estate. Both those topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussions. At exit to conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into Executive Session and talk about those two issues that I've explained. Thank you.
Approved way of reading in the minutes of August 3rd.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service agreement with Fraternal Healthcare LLC to provide Title 20 block grant funded homemaker health services for fiscal year 17, effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30, 2017, at a cost of $18,000. Authorized Director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, approval is due form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement Dunbar Armored, Inc., Cleveland, to pickup and delivery of cash and checks effective September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2017, at a cost of $374 per month for CSEA. Authorized Director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors, approval is due form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Clerk of Courts, approved First Amendment for Clerk of Courts Title Office Amherst for renewal of office space at $2,200 per month with MICA Properties Third LLC effective until October 31st, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under the Engineer, amend various resolutions due to incorrect account numbers should have been account, Engineered Products and Professional Services. For One, Resolution 16-166, adopted March 16th, awarded contract to Mark Haynes Construction, Inc., Norwalk, in the amount of $65,208 for Middle Ridge Road Bridge, 0074 Replacement Project in Brownhound Township. And Resolution 16-359, adopted June 8th, Contract Modification Number One with KS Associates for Plan Revisions for Cooper Foster Park Road Improvements in cities of Lorraine and Amherst, the amount of $184,564 and $77,000.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I only have one point of interest for the, actually for the, maybe the Commissioners, but I doubt it's something you don't know, but maybe the public doesn't. The, as of the end of July going into August, the state added another $30 million to their rainy day fund. It now stands at a whopping...
Two billion.
Two billion plus dollars.
Yep.
I would respectfully suggest that our umbrella's full of holes and it's raining like heck at the county level and city level and township level and maybe we should, you know, get a few new umbrellas out of that rainy day fund from the state. But they continue to plow cash into the rainy day fund. I don't know that they ever think it's going to rain anywhere. So that's really interesting that they had an extra 30 million to put in there and as they say, historic high levels.
Right. Of local monies and, you know, if they're not going to give it back to us, then give it back to the taxpayers.
Absolutely, one way or another. There's a responsible...
There's no reason to have $2 billion sitting in the rainy day fund.
There's a responsible amount of reserve. I wish we had a reserve, you know, 20 years ago, we were able to have a small reserve. But $2 billion plus dollars and growing, just so it could grow what the governor's ego doesn't sound very productive to the taxpayers or the local community. So I have to say this one. Thank you.
Yes, I remember when I was on Finance Committee asking Director Keen about, since our finances were better with the state and the rainy day fund was, you know, pretty flush, if the administration was giving any consideration to returning money to the local government and the schools and everybody else who, basically, they had done the Robin Hood approach with, so that they could brag about balancing the budget on the backs of the schools and the local government. And the Director told me, no, we haven't given any consideration to that and we won't.
That's surprising.
So, so that's why I said we're on our own. And so when you hear people in Columbus bragging about, you know, the amazing job that they're doing, knowing, know very well they're doing it at the expense of your, your community, your safety forces, your schools and everything else, and they're just kicking it all down to you. So when you go to vote and you're wondering, why are there so many issues for me to decide on? That's because Columbus made it that way. So your money is not coming back as it should be coming back.
Mr. Ennis.
I do have a couple of matters of imminent court action that I need to discuss with the Commissioners in Executive Session.
Mr. Ennis, your report.
You're going to hear me talk about St. Lads a lot in my report because I was there four times, starting with last Tuesday with the Sheffield Township had their night out, which I talked about last week. But then Wednesday evening, Dan Ramos, our State Rep, had a fundraiser out there and great food, great company. Thursday, we had one of our stepping up meetings, trying to keep people with mental illness and co-occurring addiction issues from being put in our jail and then what to do with them once they find themselves there. We had a good turnout and a lot of great discussion went on and we plan to meet monthly until we can get an action plan in place to try to figure out what we're going to do with that. And then that evening, our Clerk of Courts, Tom Orlando, had a steak fry at De Luca's. It was really, really, one of the better steaks I've had in a long time. Saturday, I attended the Massimiani Missoulo Family Reunion and with those two last names, you can imagine, we had a lot of really good food there and we had a really nice time. Happy birthday to Lisa, I didn't make it to your party. I'm not going to say how old you turned today. Happy birthday to you today.
Tenth anniversary, 40th birthday, Eric.
Is that what it is? Yeah.
Thanks, Todd.
Also attended the Veterans That Care fundraiser at St. Lads. Sunday, Hungarian Festival at St. Lads. Oh my gosh, talk about good food at the Hungarian Festival. And then Birthday fundraiser for Council President Joel Aaron Dondo on Sunday afternoon. Tuesday, they had the opening of the Temporary Veterans Clinic in Sheffield Village. They had a lot of people turn out to support that. It's a very nice facility. We actually looked at it for our veterans, but it was a little too large for them, but this is perfect for the VA clinic. And then last evening, Hillary Clinton Headquarters opened downtown Lorraine on Broadway and we had a nice, nice group of young people out, very passionate about getting on the bandwagon to help support Hillary Clinton and her campaign to be the first woman president. And that's the end of my report.
Busy week. I wasn't at St. Lads as often as you. I only made it three times last week, but also a lot was going on over the weekend. The St. Peters and Lorraine Festival, Dancing on Main Street, once again, their Main Street organization did a great job. The Palace Civic Center, participating with the Country Jam and the Black River Lane was a great event. Tour the New Cabela's the other evening, again, the vets. The Hillary opening was a wonderful opening, Hungarian Festival. But also, I was in Columbus on Monday. I serve on Justice and Public Safety Committee with our County Commissioners Association. We actually had a couple of guests at our meeting, Bob Cornwell, the Executive Director of the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association, and Sheriff Heldman from Hancock County. A lot of discussion was about, we need policy changes on how we're going to help our jails deal with the drug epidemic and the mental health issues. So as we were discussing different issues coming out and, you know, again, tying in with the stepping up initiative that you're a part of, Commissioner, drop off centers, crisis beds, managed detox. They also talked about the body scanners that Sheriff Stomina brought up to us, where people are sneaking in drugs in other jail facilities around the state. Hancock County actually got one refurbished from the TSA.
How much was that?
Reduced cost, he didn't say. But also with, in regards to the mental health issue, some of the Addus Boards, I don't know about ours, I haven't looked into it yet, some of the Addus Boards are actually performing some services within county jails across the state, some aren't. So I'll be in discussion with Elaine. Again, the big issue being Medicaid suspended in our county jails when they enter, but the state isn't, doesn't have to adhere to that in regards to their facilities?
Well, the state, the state doesn't have to, nor do we. The, any state that has an active Medicaid expansion, which Ohio has, is eligible to enroll prisoners into Medicaid. It's not used though for routine care, but if they, you do have a prisoner that goes to the emergency room, is admitted to the hospital, Medicaid will pick up that bill.
Okay.
But they have to be enrolled.
Right. But are they picking up the mental health issue side and the drug addiction side though?
While they're incarcerated, the bills don't get paid.
Correct.
The, I'm not sure...
That was the discussion point.
Right. I'm not sure what the nuance is about hospitalization. We haven't had that many prisoners over the years I recall being hospitalized, but it has occurred, but it's rare. It would be nice if it covered, you know, the routine medical. The statistics are staggering, the amount of medical costs for incarcerated folks in the country in general. Ohio was right there in the leading indicators. But I did send over some information to the Sheriff's Department with regard to enrolling those folks into Medicaid, even though we could not use them for routine care. If an event occurred that they were hospitalized, we will leave us of some of that burden. And secondly, I read something very interesting that this could be part of a reentry anti-recidism program where most folks, they leave jail and they have no healthcare and they don't sign up, they don't know where to go, they don't do anything. And that's another problematic area of their lives that, that we could actually have them more prepared on reentry to deal with those issues. So I sent it out to the jail and asked the Sheriff if there's something we wanted to work with, with the general population, either while they're in the facility or when we knew they were going to be discharged, a little bit before that. So we're doing something.
Is that that information I sent to you?
It may have been. Is that the same reading that you were doing?
Yeah.
And I went online and found a whole bunch of other stuff.
Right.
So, you know, we may put that in the mosaic of services.
Yeah, because a lot of times it's just a matter of these people don't, can't afford their medication because they don't have insurance. So if they, you know, they go off their meds and they find themselves in a, you know, meltdown situation, end up in jail instead of, you know, just could have been a matter of medication.
Well, one of the things is, we don't really have a step down program and a reentry program. There's been a couple efforts added in the community, but it's an expensive thing to do and coordination of services is really, really challenging. And we not only need to decrease the amount of people incarcerated, but we need to make sure that we somehow hand off these folks so we can beat down the recidivism rate. It's really, it's really high.
Well, they had an example, I shared with Commissioner Kokowski about how Kentucky's done theirs. They've got a new system of care within there and discussion points they're having with the Buckeye State Sheriff's Association, again, us in mental health. There are also discussions about statutory court costs, clerk of court fees were last increased in 92, and probate court fees last increased in 1976 from the state level to help pay for those operations. Elimination of mark users fees is one of our discussion points with the legislature next year. And Indian defense, maintain our 50% reimbursement, which it took seven, eight years to get, and then have the state pay for all of our death penalty issues.
Is that going to be the legislative slate from CCO? Is that...
It's part of it. It'll be part of it through our committee here. We all have our different avenues we take, so. I think that about completes my report. All done.
Also had the opportunity to attend Representative Ramos's event and having had the chance to work with Representative Ramos in Columbus and even before he became a State Rep, he was one of our lead people on Finance Committee and tracking a lot of important legislative issues. You know, couldn't ask for a sharper mind down there in Columbus to really keep track of everything that's going on and also enjoyed attending our Clerk of Courts, Tom Orlando's event as well. That was a very good event. Congratulations Main Street on another successful Dancing in the Streets. Wasn't able to attend, but they know how to throw a party over there, that's for sure. Having been there in the past and it's always very well attended. Joel Aaron Dondo had an event as well too at Mexican Mutual on Sunday and just, just a real class guy and just always enjoy working with the President Counsel over there in Lorraine. Congratulations to Cabela's with their grand opening. That's really going to be a destination location for a lot of, for our area, a lot of people coming in to attend and shop at Cabela's. So I think that's going to bring a lot of people into the area and hopefully working closely with our Visit Lorraine County folks, we'll be able to get folks to come and not only shop but stay and maybe use some of their fishing equipment and other things while they're in the area to take advantage of our lakefront. Congratulations to everyone involved in bringing the VA offices to the Sheffield Village. And later today, I'll be meeting with members of Illyria Main Street as they prepare for their Pops concert coming up. So that completes my report.
Board Correspondents.
I move to approve the Board Correspondents and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment.
Public comment at this time. Thelma, I know that you were wanting to provide some public comment this morning, correct?
Yeah, Commissioner Lundey, a good time.
If, yeah, if you could just come up to the podium here, if that would be possible. Vice President of the Illyria NAACP, Thelma Adams. Good morning.
At this time, Commissioner Lundey, and I do want to thank you for returning my call. I think I asked you one question that we wanted to know and that was who the EEO Officer for the county was.
Tom Kelly.
Tom.
Tom Kelly.
Tom Kelly.
Right.
Okay, and where is Tom located?
Tom is our Emergency Management Administrator.
Emergency Manager, Administrator, must have an office.
Gates Building.
Gates Building.
Pardon?
Gates Building.
Okay, the Gates Building.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be one question. I think we will start there and then you will be hearing from us. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could just state your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Mark Strauss. I'm the managing member of Avon SNF Realty LTD, 2433, Michelle Court, Willoughby Hills, Ohio, 44094. Commissioner Lundey, other members of the Commission, other county officials. Mr. Ennis and Mr. Cortez are very familiar with me, having worked with me for about 15 months now. If you're not familiar with me, I own a company called Avon 25 Real Estate LLC. Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, in December 30, 2014, purchased 52 acres on Nagel Road, off of Nagel Road, in the Avon Place Health Campus. The purpose of the acquisition of 52 acres was to build a 800-unit congregate care community. In January of 2015, I sold 32 acres to a group out of Michigan who is constructing a $40 million senior care community. The first building is 177 units, that's opening in November of this year. That building is a $27.5 million building. It will employ the equivalent of about 100 full-time employees and at max will be probably between $3.5 and $4 million in payroll taxes. In addition, that group received approval of 76 ranch senior homes that'll be rentals. That was on July 20th of this year. That project's about $7.5 million. So since December of 2014, I've been instrumental in bringing to Lorraine County close to $40 million in senior housing rental, basically, which Avon sorely needed at that particular time. Remaining from the 52 acres was 19 acres, which my company, Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, now controls. We believe based upon the sale of the acreage in the area, that that property is worth at a fair market value of about $150,000 an acre, which translates to about $3 million of property value. In addition, I have under option, another 5.28 acres from the Jacobs Group, which will grow the project to 24.5 acres. On that 24.5 acres, the first component of that project is a skilled nursing facility, an 82-bed skilled nursing facility. In October of 2015, Avon SNF Realty LTD entered into a contract with the county to acquire the 82 Golden Acre bed licenses to be transferred or relocated to this property for a $16 million skilled nursing facility and potentially a Phase II in-resident and outpatient dialysis center that may, at some point in time, have some relationship to the Cleveland Clinic. The reason why I'm here before you this evening is, is that while I'm a land developer, I'm not the builder or the management company of this project or any of the projects that I've put together. My expertise over the last five years in senior housing has been to locate land for companies that do build and operate skilled nursing facilities in senior communities. This project has the significant potential, eventually a full buildout, to be between a $60 and $80 million project with the equivalent of approximately 250 full-time employees and payroll in excess of $6 million. An individual who was going to build and then subsequently lease the skilled nursing facility and I have run into a conflict. On July 31st, that individual, through his family trust, terminated the acquisition of 8.15 acres in Avon, Ohio. That does not diminish the fact that Avon SNF Realty, in my opinion, and while I want to tell you for, in the beginning, that I've worked very closely for the last year with Mr. Cortez and Mr. Ennis, there, I have the utmost respect for them and I appreciate all that they have done and the efforts they have made throughout the last year. But as the saying goes, we can agree to disagree. I think that both the county and Avon SNF can be partially to blame for where we stand today. But what these, what you Commissioners need to know is that I've worked tirelessly since last October with Senator Gail Manning, the Ohio Department of Health, and the Ohio Legislature to preserve the ability for Lorraine County to receive $1,250,000 for these bed licenses and for these beds to be relocated to Avon, Ohio, on a skilled nursing facility that I intend to build on my property. I'm not sure whether or not all of you are aware of the fact, but, and I'll be very brief. The law in Ohio was very clear up until just this month, or last month, I'm sorry, July 12th. When a county nursing home closes and those beds have not been relocated prior to closure or a certificate of need has been approved for the relocation of those beds prior to closure, those bed licenses terminate. In contrast, if a private home closes, a private home has one year to sell those beds from the date of closure. Gail Manning was very instrumental inserting into House Bill 483, which was passed by the Legislature at the end of this past session before the summer. It takes effect on October 12th, 2016. It's a temporary law that was written specifically for Golden Acres, which Rick Reckler, who I retained and paid six figures to have this law changed. It says on page 157 and 158, Section 737.10A, existing long care facility has the meaning as in this section of the revised code. Long-term care bed has the same meaning in 3702.15, except that it also means a bed that is located in a former county home or former county nursing home and was a part of the county's homes or county nursing homes authorized maximum certified capacity for purposes of Medicare/Medicaid programs before the effective date of this section. The Director of Health shall accept for review under consideration a certificate of need to which all the following apply. And the key in the inserted language was, a former county home or former county nursing home was an existing long-term care facility on or before October 1st, 2015. Golden Acres closed on October 30th, 2015. That was the key language. The next key language can be found on page 158 and 157, 158. The application for a certificate of need is submitted to the Director during the period beginning October 1st, 2005, 2015, and ending 90 days after the effective date of this section. It's a temporary law that was written solely for you, Lorraine County, and Golden Acres. That law takes effect, as I mentioned, on October 12th, 2017. There is 90 days till January 10th, 2017, to get this application in to the state of Ohio so that Lorraine County can benefit from the sale of these beds and $1,250,000. so that Lorain County can benefit from the sale of these beds and $1,250,000. I have with me today, and I know there's been some representations to the county, which I hope to find out, but on September 8, 2014, ordinance 10414 to Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, a special use permit to operate a congregate care facility on 52 acres that I acquired in December 2014. December 30, 2014, a limited warranty deed from Jacobs, JG Avon LLC to Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, demonstrating that I own the land that I say that this nursing home will be located on. And then on November 2015, that special use permit was extended to an additional 6.8 acres that I had under contract, which has now been reduced to 5.28 because we have the final design of the building. That special use permit was ordinance 14615. So I want to be clear to the commissioners that whatever has been represented to them, Avon 25 Real Estate LLC has the land, has the zoning, has been instrumental with Senator Gail Manning in changing the law to develop a skilled nursing facility in Avon, Ohio, using the 82 skilled license, skilled bed licenses that were formerly or are the property of Golden Acres. On October 29, 2015, Avon SNF Realty entered into a agreement with Lorain County, the Board of Commissioners. I received yesterday from Jerry Innes an email that indicated that as of last week, the commissioners perceived that the former purchaser of the 8.15 acres is in a better position than I, Mark Strauss, to close the transaction with the county. That I vehemently disagree with. At this point in time, I have no information that Mr. Francis owns any land, has the zoning in place, or the ability to build a skilled nursing facility in Lorain, Ohio, and submit a certificate of need between October 12, 2016 and January 10, 2017. In addition, I pointed out to Mr. Innes yesterday in my response to that email that there are a number of conditions of the October 29, 2015 agreement that still need to be complied with by the county and that the statement of Mr. Innes that he believes the contract no longer is valid is wholly inaccurate in the opinion of Avon SNF Realty LTD. A closing date has not been set. The warranty that the beds are still valid and able to be transferred is not true because of the fact that the law won't take effect on October 12. What will happen on October 12, and the state legislature has been kind enough to pass and Senator Manning has been tirelessly working to obtain, is that the bed licenses will be resurrected for a finite period of time. I believe that I asked the commissioners to instruct the administration and county officials that at this point in time, we believe there's a valid purchase agreement in place, conditions that have not been met, and that once those conditions have been met, Avon SNF Realty LTD, Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, Avon 4 Real Estate LLC stands before this commission, ready, willing, and able to comply with the terms and conditions of the October 29, 2015 agreement. This is a critical component of an overall $80 million project. Mr. Francis and whoever, whatever company or whatever contract Mr. Innes has before him today does not have the vested interest in Lorain County as Mark Strauss and Avon 25. I've demonstrated that today because you can go out and touch and feel the bricks of a $27.5 million building. And by the way, just so the commissioners are aware of the fact, it's my understanding that in that building of the 177 units, 68 of them are independent senior. They are all pre-leased and there is now a waiting list. That's what forced the acceleration of the ranch rentals that were approved for that project on July 20. So as of today, I can stand here before you and say that I, Mark Strauss and Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, in the last three years currently brought $40 million of new senior housing rental communities, the equivalent of 100 full-time employees and what will be between $3.5 and $4 million in payroll. And the skilled nursing facility, if we are able to work through this, will bring also the equivalent of approximately 100 employees, full-time employees, and $2.5 million in payroll. The last thing, and I'll be very brief, is one other component of this project that you need to be aware of is that I've been working with Lorain County Economic Development, Don Romancic and his staff, over the last four weeks. We believe that we are close to obtaining for this project a half a million dollar grant to be used for, from the state of Ohio, for infrastructure and road improvements because one of the key components to the second phase of this project, and that is the 400 units and nearly another $30 million of development, is that there be a main road from Nagel Road back to these 24.5 acres. Jacobs, at this point in time, has preliminarily committed the 1.75 acres of their land for this road. We have obtained engineering firms who are willing to donate their time and efforts for the plans and specifications for this road, and my obligation is to contribute 50% of the overall road costs, which will be about $1 million. So a half a million dollars from the state of Ohio, a half a million dollars from myself, which will also be in the equivalent of land and things and the land that Jacobs will give. But all this coming together, again, steers economic development to this area because not only will this new road feed the balance of the senior community, but it will also provide access for the 34 acres in front of us, if you're familiar with the property that surrounds the new Primrose Preschool in that area. So I beg the commissioners, and not beg the, I ask the commissioners to give myself, Avon 25 Real Estate LLC, Avon SNF Realty, the ability to continue to move forward, to close this transaction, acquire the 82-bed licenses, and move forward with a skilled nursing facility in Avon, Ohio. Lastly, and I could give you, not only land control, zoning, working with the county for a state grant, but on July 20, 2016, I received general development plan approval for the skilled nursing facility in Avon, Ohio, from the Avon Planning Commission. We are moving forward with final development plans and assuming that everything works out, we anticipate breaking ground either late this year or early in 2017 with a projected opening date of the skilled nursing facility in March of 2018. I thank you for your time this morning, and again, I just ask you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. You know, obviously, it's a legal matter, so we won't be able to comment at this time. I do want to thank you for the advances you've made for development in the area. You did state earlier, and you may have misspoken, you advocated for the change, you didn't pay for the change. I think you said that you paid for the change in the law. You advocated for the change in the law.
Well, I hired, I hired Brick, I hired, yes, I hired Brick Reckler, who, and their legislate, yes, I apologize, Commissioner, but yes, yes.
If I may, there's a few areas of clarification, I think, that need to be discussed. Well, I find some of your statements to be factually manipulated to suit your purpose. But counsel has indicated that I should not comment, and I won't. But clearly, some of the statements made would induce folks to believe certain things that I think are not accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss.
It's nice to put a face with the name, though.
Thank you.
Heard about you for weeks and weeks, so now I see who you are. Thank you for coming in today.
Anyone else willing to provide, or interested in public comment at this time? Seeing no one, I move that we go into executive session, discuss the issues that were outlined by the county administrator and the legal issues likewise outlined by the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Liria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
I wish I was in school.
If only I had a math test today.
Or a book report to give.
I wish I was in school.
I'll stay after class. I'll clean the chalkboard.
I'll do extra homework. I'll skip recess.
I wish I was in school.
I wish I was in school.
I really wish I was in school.
School ends, but free lunches for your kids don't have to. Find your local food bank at feedingamerica.org/summermeals for help. Together, we're feeding America.